Sorry.
I knew that was gonna happen.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, October twenty first, two thousand and twenty four Select Board Meeting. We're here at six P M. in the Land Use Hearing Room. This meeting is also being held in hybrid format. Present this evening are myself, Chairman Jason Perron, Vice Chair Diane Gale, Kirk Doug Moblin, Assistant C A O Nadine Signoni, and Chief Administrative Officer Nicole Parker. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Didi, would you lead us?
My pleasure. Goodbye, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Going off the meeting with public comments. Is there anyone in the audience that has any public comments? Sir, or Didi, two five eight three Neil Road, South of Mass. Just a couple of things. I'm a little confused with some of the figuring I'm seeing on the Select Board. I get it sometimes, but really they start looking good at the end. So you gotta kind of look at them a little bit, you too. Last week's meeting, or the week before, whenever it was, you guys had a lot of stuff go through. It doesn't seem like you're asking about how much things cost. And it's not a bad thing. I'm not against anything, but the snowy thing, you know, there's a bonus involved because your termses are high. We went up a couple bucks. I get it. But I don't hear a dollar value to that. And what worries me is, and I know we deficit spend snow flying, but believe it or not, at the end of the day, it's the townspeople's money. So it does matter whether we can deficit spend or not. So I just think you gotta be a little bit more cautious, or we can change the format. At every meeting, you can tell Joe Didi how much you spent at the last meeting that wasn't in the budget, and then help us with our budget system. That's all. Yes, I mean, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience? Is there anyone on Zoom that is any public comments? Let me see more takers. You're gonna move right on to new business. Our first business thought is item A is going to be appointment of Leon Moran to the call force paramedic. Yeah, anybody? Any showing up?
I don't think so.
You know, they didn't want to.
Chief sent an email.
Chief sent an email. Okay. Um, has any everybody looked over their packet?
This was in the new one?
It was in the, I think, last, actually, the other day I did read it, so I just.
It's just a letter.
Yeah.
Don't we normally have them come in and just?
It's not a member of the call force. It's a per diem. It would be a good idea, but it's a member of the.
I thought you had to do that the last time. Okay. So I'll make a motion to appoint Leon Moran for the call force as a per diem paramedic.
Second.
Roll call vote. Jason Perron, aye.
Dan Gell, aye.
Doug Moblin, yes.
Topic B is going to be the Springfield M R F contract renewal D P W. Randy? Come on up. How are you?
Good. So as you probably know, we, all of our paper, plastic recyclables that we collected at transportation, go to the Springfield and M R F. Um, we're one of sixty five communities that bring our refuse there. So our contract, our current contract expires next June thirtieth. Uh, so there's a, so there's a M R F Advisory Board that's kind of tasked with uh coordinating and um these new, these new contracts. So the Advisory Board met with D E P. They're involved. They're the owners of the M R F and the current operator to negotiate the new contract. And so I gave that to you in your packet. Uh, the new agreement has a two and a half percent annual increase over processing fees plus initial one percent increase in fees, which start July first, two thousand and twenty six. Uh, the contract is good for five years. And um I gave you all the numbers in the letter. There is a meeting with the M R F Advisory Board tomorrow to kind of go over questions we may have about the contract. Um, I, you know, I suspect this is, you know, one of those take it or leave type contracts. There's really no other option that we have for disposal. Um, some of the bigger cities have enough volume where they can, you know, contract individually with with the vendors. We're not in that situation, and that's why we collectively, with sixty five other communities, uh, were in the, in the boat for this contract. So I'm kind of letting you know where we are, where we're staying with this. Um, as you may know, uh, recyclables are commodities. That goes up and goes down every day. Um, when I first started this job about ten years ago, we were bringing in revenue for recyclables. We brought in about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars a year um in revenue. Now we're paying. Um, right now, our average bill is about nine hundred dollars, nine hundred to a thousand dollars a month for refer for um paper and plastics. Um, the value changes every, every day based on the commodity value, and that's built in the contract. Um, if you can believe or not, for a period of time, right after COVID, we were actually paying more to dispose of paper and plastics than we're for trash. Just the commodity, you know, when COVID hit, everybody's buying things on Amazon, right? Cardboard is everywhere. There's no value to it. So we're paying for disposal of all those items. That has changed a little bit. It's gone for the better, but we're still, we're still paying for these items, and I don't see that changing. So that's who we are. Um, I don't know if you have a chance to re-review the contract. But um I have a meeting with the M R F Advisory Board tomorrow. I can pass along any questions that you may have. I have a couple myself, but any questions right here?
So you said it's about nine hundred dollars a month for the recyclables?
Our, our current bill is about nine hundred dollars a month.
And it's offset by whatever that's worth at the time, or?
No, that is, that is, that is with the, the allocation. Yeah, so in the latter here, I gave you our current pricing. So right now, we pay one oh three, twenty one a ton for the items. And the market value is eighty dollars and fifty six cents per ton. So we're actually paying twenty dollars and sixty five cents per ton. Those are September numbers. So I guess I also led in a letter. I said that over the last four years, their market value range between fifty dollars and one and twenty six dollars a ton.
So no fee, no, no additional fee this year?
Yeah, well, a two percent, two and a half percent increase in, in year one, and then years two through five are an additional one percent.
So the two, the one oh five across the board, that's with the two and a half. So that's what you're saying.
The way they, I don't understand why they did it like this. It's kind of confusing, but they kept the two and a half percent that we've had for the past, in the current contract.
Yeah.
And then they added that one percent on years two through five.
Which we don't know what that is yet. Correct?
Yeah, I'm assuming it's just how they negotiated the contract. I, it's, it sounds kind of funky to me, but I think that's just what, what they did. But I'll ask a question tomorrow.
So I didn't want to sign off on that until we had an explanation of what that is. They delineated it in their contract, but they didn't what it is. It's just new this year. There will be an additional one percent on the prior year's charge. So it isn't even actually a full one percent. It's one percent of the prior year, it says.
Hmm.
Right?
Yeah, yeah.
So I would.
My, my, I'll ask a question, but I don't know. I, I'm just like, it's, this is probably.
I, I hear you.
You know, and, and if you do the numbers, if it's uh two and a half, three and a half, three and a half, three and a half, you know, four times, it's, it works in a town's favor with this formula, then, you know, two and a half, then three percent, three and a half every year for the next four years. That may be part of the, that was part of the negotiation.
Hmm.
Just wait.
So I just, so it's not due until December thirty first. It's a week we can.
Yeah, I got this. I want to let you have it right away. Uh, I don't like, you know, like waiting on sitting on things like this. Um, like I say, I also have a meeting with the Advisory Board tomorrow, so timing was right to share it with you. Good doing.
Thanks. Yes.
Apologies.
Any questions there, Doug?
Um, I just had one observation and one question. Observation was on the recyclables, it's actually gone like a hundred percent the other way, right? So what we were getting, we're now paying. It went from what we were paying to zero to what we're paying. That's great.
Hmm.
We're seeing that. I've seen it in the private sector too, in the commodity. It's what we, we used to get money for the recyclables, and now you're paying a haul.
It all used to go to China. China took everything from every country, and then there was a China national store policy, and they just stopped taking everything. So this. But in the meantime, new markets popped up other countries, so there is a, a market for it, but not as robust as it was when it changed.
And then what is, do you know roughly what is the the strength of the sixty five communities against a significant city? Like, I, I, you know, probably not from a bargaining perspective, you know, if you, you have the cloud of sixty five communities, is that equal to uh name the city?
Yeah, I don't know. So it, it, there was something new in this contract, which I'm going to ask about, is there's a tonnage fee adjustment. So there's a baseline tonnage, which has to be guaranteed amongst those sixty five communities. And that's sixteen thousand eight hundred tons for the year. So I don't know what a city like Springfield generates. Um, but these sixty five communities are most towns in Western Mass and in Hampshire County, Franklin County, Berkshire County, uh, minus the bigger, bigger cities.
Sure, they, they, because they negotiate their end.
I think Westfield's a larger city. They have their own negotiation. Westfield. Uh, I think West Springfield's in this, but I know Springfield's not. I think Holyoke is not. Chickaby is. Well, there's some of the cities do, but not all of them. I don't know what they generate, but one question I will ask is, you know, what, what are they? Where are they bringing the right ones? You know, what, how does this rate compare to their contracts? That I don't know.
And what was our tonnage that we brought last year?
Oh, good question. Uh, we are about I want to say about two thousand tons. It's in our, it's reported every year in our annual report. Uh, it's broken up by item. I forget exactly how many we, I didn't, how many we have it paid. I wouldn't say it's sixteen hundred or plastics or paper and a little less than for paper. Uh, see, so papers, two hundred and thirty seven tons. Bottom with hands, hundred forty eight. So I was, was up by a fat for ten. So combined about four hundred tons a year. And those fluctuate a little bit, but not that much. Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
No questions?
Any? So put in the business and.
Yeah, I'll have a contract ready for next meeting again. So that's the only question we have is what kind of this one percent fee, what is it for? Wow, it's a broken, like this, right?
Thank you.
Next item is going to be item C under for the approved consultants for treasurer, collector, and town clerk.
Yeah, so Nicole. Yeah, you have, you, you have a quote in your packet. Since breaking up the treasurer, collector, and clerk, they are um requesting some guidance and some training specific to their departments. So again, you have the quotes, and then I have basically, um, you know, a not to exceed amount for the training for them. We don't, it's not set, of course. It would be set by you. Um, I did this in my last town when we um we did something similar. And um we combined the treasurer collector, and this firm came out and trained the entire office, which I do not think that it's that um, you know, it's, that was a brand new office. I think uh these are individuals, our employees have a very good handle on their tasks and their departments, but they do have questions. They, they are new and they do, you know, they would, are requesting some training. And um if nothing else, I'm here to support them, right? So I'm requesting that we, you know, set aside a a set, set amount of money to give them training. And then if we need to come back to you and say, you know, that they would like some more training um specific to this or specific to that, or we didn't need all the training, we didn't use all the money. Um, there's approximately ten thousand dollars left in the T C C reorg. Um, there's about eight thousand dollars in hired service. And there's twenty thousand dollars in a part time salary of in our department, which we will not be needing.
How much was that one? The part ten?
Twenty. It's twenty three technically.
And you've worked with this firm, this firm before, both of these that you're proposing here? And then the tasks that are listed on the treasurer collector, are those some of the things they're seeking, or is that what they are suggesting as a starting?
No, we had a consult with the firms and with, I had one with the treasurer collector, and then I had one separate with the clerk. And they went over things that they would like to see, and if they could, you know, do, do you have experience in this? Do you have experience in that? And they both had extensive experience in knowledge um and were willing to come out and do the training. There aren't that many firms. This is going to be a lucrative career for people. I think once retirement comes around, is coming out to the municipalities to help train them. So they're not cheap. But they are, you know, I saw a huge difference. And I think that, um, you know, giving our employees the tools they need to, you know, do a great job in their respective departments is um is important. And so I'm advocating for that.
Where's Gilbertville?
It's our group.
Okay.
Hmm. It's our group.
And how many days, hours, how many, what do you anticipate? Is this working with?
This is what we would, you know, this is where the not to exceed. I don't know exactly how much they need. I don't know their exact level of expertise or experience versus what they really want to learn. Um, I think, again, I think they're both doing an excellent job right now, so I don't know that they need, you know, fifty hours or, you know, a month of training.
They may know more than they think they know.
Yeah, and, and they may just be not, you know, not as confident and comfortable in their knowledge and just some reassurance from people with extensive experience. I tried for months to find a actual town clerk training facility, and even um Christie went to a conference for days and there weren't any. So again, these retired clerks are going to come back out and they're going to, they're going to be consultants, and that's going to be the wave of the future. It's extremely hard to get municipal employees right now in this climate, or any employees.
I have no problem with training. They're key positions. We need that.
Oh, absolutely. Mr. Moblin?
I don't disagree. I think we, I, I would be very judicious with, you know, as we, as we step it in to see, you know, set a, a, a small baseline and, and bring someone in for a few hours and see how it goes, and then you know, have a wider discussion around, you know, what that might be, because um what was the amount that was left in the accountant, in the account for the consolidation or transition?
Ten. I, I don't know. He's not completely done yet, so. Um, I think he's pretty much done. You know, I think there's just a couple of loose ends that they're doing. Um, because I've been watching that all along. That was really where I was hoping to get most of it appropriately from that account, but um, you know, with the windows and things like that, it costs more, so um.
Well, plus there's, there's maybe some more work in the assessors too, right? So to get all that square.
How was we thinking?
I really don't know. I mean, um, I, they know what they're doing, and they, they don't know our employees. But in my experience with them, I think they know a lot more than they really. You know, I don't think they're going to need quite extensive training. But how many hours is it going to take? How, how fast they absorb it? How fast they, you know, can uh communicate and get all the documentation and all the training materials and, you know, whether it's what, what happens annually, what happens by end, and what happens quarterly um in each of the departments. Um, Christie was asking some questions the other day about um I can't remember some of the things that are on here. Um, Gateway, that's something, you know, that's important, but the clerks need to get on the state website and do that in um town meetings and warrants and voters registration and those types of things, so.
I feel like it's a treasurer, if it's a four hour work session call, plus travel, it's eight fifty for the four hours. Times, you know, they do it for six weeks maybe and see where it goes.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would, I was thinking, you know, either not to exceed three thousand dollars in each of their departments. I don't, I think that's going to go pretty quickly, but that will give us a really good idea on what else they need.
Yep, so eight fifty times four there is, so that'd be four four hour increments would be right about there. So you could do it that way for thirty days and see.
And then I think if we really feel, you know, I'll, I'll meet with the, with the department heads again and see how they feel, you know, where, gauge where they are and.
I mean, it's not like they're starting from zero. They have a grasp on a lot of it.
Yes, I, I, I started basically from zero in my last town, and it was fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I can't see it being.
And I absolutely don't. It wouldn't even be nearly half that. That was just for treasurer collector, but I was creating an entirely new office. So um so that, that somewhere around there, I guess, would be a good ballpark to start at.
You said three thousand total right now?
No, I was going to say each.
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 We could with that?
I'm okay with the number, but.
That makes sense to you, Doug?
Yeah, I kind of had just about a thousand dollars less. What, I, I see where you're coming from. I think, you know, obviously, the, the the treasurer collector had a bit more experience as the assistant coming into the job, and then we split the role with the clerk being new. I, I think, you know, certainly we should have made um, you know, somewhere between three to five thousand dollars as a start, you know. Uh, indifference to any attorneys in the room, it's less expensive than an attorney. So um.
So you just want to make it five thousand between the two for?
Yeah, and then we can always come back in front of the board and see how it's going and say, hey, this is the best thing since sliced bread, or I didn't learn a thing, and then we can go from there.
Absolutely, sure.
And it, you know, it's within the budget that we already have allocated, given the breathing room we have on the on the transition, so.
So you want to motion to approve these two service providers?
Sure. I don't know that necessarily need a motion. Movements are always good.
Oh, if we don't, well, we'll make a motion to approve Mass Munifin, Sarah Hunter, and Ryan Witco for training for the treasurer and clerk, treasurer collector and the town clerk with a cap of five thousand dollars. Did we just say five thousand?
Hmm.
To start, and then we'll evaluate from there.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
I'll, I'll second it. Subject to I'm not going to pretend I know all the purchasing rules for vendor selection. If they're on a state contract that we're able to hire them direct, or we have to do some other, you know, R F P type of thing or R F Q to, for this, I don't know.
It, it's low in the amount, first of all, and, yeah, and um this is definitely, this is one of the exempt. Not if we're going to.
This is right up your alley. This is, you got one of your certification side. That's why I'm saying indifference to it. I seconded the motion.
And I, and I would take all of the um responsibility for that.
Right. Looking for a little call vote? Jason Perron, aye.
Dan Gell.
Doug Moblin, yes.
What am I on the agenda is going to be, all right, so we're actually gonna, we had a scheduled six fifteen start time, if I'm not mistaken, for the master plan, did we not?
I was, I was just gonna speak to that. Is it, I don't know if, if Mr. Doherty has others coming from the planning board tonight, or if we can pull them into the agenda at this point.
Yeah.
David Sutton, Jacob Singer.
You know.
Just you.
So you have a form.
Just you and Diane, but.
This, we don't want to forget who's the workers.
No, no, yeah, we are.
Yeah, we'll get to that.
Hi, thanks for coming.
Hi, everyone.
Voice from God, it's Diane.
Yeah. So. Point you're designing, right? In the charge?
Well, yeah, we can do that, too.
Unless you don't have.
Someone's on there, I nominate him, but.
You should do it exactly, because just now, here, shame on it for missing a meeting.
We were telling him that he's on it, and there's no question about that, but.
Whether we want to do that to the rest of the committee.
Um, I would, uh, I'll nominate um Dave Spina for your planning board position on.
I will second the nomination of David Spina to the end.
I will be looking to, I have a motion to approve that.
Is that ours or yours?
Uh, we've already voted. We.
You already did?
We didn't actually.
Oh, we didn't actually. We can right now. We'll do a roll call vote. Michael's already on.
Dave Spina, oh, all right. That's good.
They did theirs.
So I'd be looking for motion, it's up there, recommendation, right?
Do we need, we don't do that.
Do we?
Do we need to approve their?
Recommendation?
No.
No, they said.
It's not even a joint appointment. It's their appointment.
Just wanted to make sure.
I have nothing to say about it.
I guess.
So it's a great choice, if I may, because, you know, Dave served on the, on the master plan advisory, so.
Served well.
Um, and the other thing we're talking about is the charges that Diane wanted to talk about. Have you guys gone over all Diane's stuff and Jessica's stuff? And the most recent thing from Diane will see on this, this afternoon, we got it. Will be um potentially roles and responsibilities. A, we'll take a nice shortened down bullet first, bullet point fusion.
Do you have thoughts, suggestions? I know you've had thoughts and suggestions. We got that. Thank you. I'm married to any of it, just that's, you know, pulling from what you supplied and from my trainings with the regional planning, that this would be encompassing not only what we're asking them to do, but how we're asking them to do it, and what the the limits kind of are what we're asking you to do. Give a little guidance.
Addition specificity for some of like their poor contents and. Okay. Yeah.
Shall.
Yes.
I think um, I think having more detail. I think yours is a good, good sort of upper level, and then having filling in with more details is the way to go. I mean, I, to me really there's only um, I want to say who would be, I guess, three things that I care about, which is um, I mean, I think I see the committee as a as someone who could take the laboring ore and get stuff to um the, the boards, um, because they, a lot of the board, I mean, I'm speaking to the planning board, but I'm sure others are in the same boat, where they just don't have the time to proactively do some of these things. And so if stuff comes sort of, you know, um, partially big to us, it's a lot easier to take those on and move forward than it is to sort of create stuff anew. So using them as a resource, which I think is incorporated in both Jessica's and Diane's.
Yep.
Um, I think the reporting is important because I see them as a bit of a check and balance on making sure the master plan is implemented. Um the one thing I didn't see here that I just would raise for consideration, it's not sort of a. Um, huge thing for me, but it just strikes me that they probably should have some role in. Uh, which I think I seen in. Milton, maybe Milton had its little bit stranger setup, where they had like a ten year. Charge, I think, and were, and then sort of. Figure it out after the end of ten years, right? I'm not sure I would agree with that, but I think. What was incorporated in theirs was the idea of. Um, the implementation committee sort of. Offering opinion about whether the master plan needed to be updated. Right, um, I mean, that's. Should be farther down the line, but if assuming this is being set up as a committee. That's gonna persist, um, I think that that's. Something that you may want to add.
I, I think that's in there to some degree in Jessica's, she pulled out the recommends changes if necessary. I'm sorry, and the mission of the thing, did you also have something in there about updates to the plan? Do you call that?
Reassessment of things every three years.
Um, recommended changes if necessary to the composition makeup and or mission charge. Mission charge, that's this mission, but that's.
That's more about this in particular.
Yep.
I mean, it's longer term, but I do think they should have some. Reporting on that.
I mean.
Particular topic because.
Put an end to. Their terms. Because it would be ongoing. And I, to me, I would think there would be another. Advisory, another M pack. Based on feedback from the MP. If we needed to make a revision, a major revision to the master plan.
Right, and like I said, that's probably much further down the line, I don't think you would do anything for it, it's not.
But you would like to put that in, say, in five years.
Should be part of their. If this is their charge, I mean, I think that should be part of their charge to sort of say. Hey, we should.
Is the rest of it doable at that point?
The, or like say fifteen years down the line, say, okay, you know, we should really start looking into updating this, because we've accomplished. You know, either most of it, or we've accomplished stuff that really can be accomplished, and we're sort of at a standstill. I mean, that kind of thing, they'll have a better pulse, uh, better, you know.
Planning for a budget for an early.
I mean. No.
Depends on where. He's not wrong, because really ideally you should have a master plan every ten to fifteen years, right? And probably at the middle of that, you should probably be introspective and go, is there anything we should update now that we're, we were way off on the twenty forty plan? This is really where we should be going, or it is going, and we need to adapt the plan accordingly, and then. Ten years out. Because you want to get it done in fifteen, ten years out, you start having a discussion around doing it, this is exactly what. Well, we went a little bit longer than ten years on the last one, right? But there was discussions for three or four years budget wise. To get. You know, some of the money apportioned at town meeting to start the master plan. Process again, and we got it into. Two allocations plus a grant plus, um. You know, other sources of funds, but Pioneer Valley. Also does have. Um, funds available for projects that you can petition them for and try to apply and get a grant from through or from them. For something, for a minor update to your master plan, and or the town could just go ahead and, you know, we take a look at something that was in the master plan that we, we all decided that that was. A great idea. Impossible to execute, but we better off to do something else, I'm just making it up. Okay, there's nothing saying we couldn't do that and vote to adopt it in the same manner that we adopted the master plan in the first place. Right? Um, as a revision to the master plan, but and then when you go to the whole, you know, the whole big spiel, where you do an impact and you have, you know. Ten or fifteen people on it, and you, you meet, you know, for more than a year. Um, that's a much larger hill to climb. But I think that, you know, part of the MP. Is gonna report back that this, you know. Hey, this is a great idea, but it's impossible, this water flows downhill, right? You know, that doesn't, that part of the master plan didn't work out the way we intended, okay?
Part of the reporting is the progress and or barriers.
Yep.
Periodically, we could state what those periods are, at five years, ten years.
And you know, maybe it's. Yeah, it's, it is part of the reporting, but maybe it should be called out either, either in either of these charges. To say, okay, you know. Report back, you know. Revisions to the master plan itself, it'd be one thing if you just don't do something that's in the master plan. This doesn't happen, it doesn't work out, every master plan is gonna have things like that.
That fall off.
Right, hundred percent, I mean, look at, even look at our ones from the sixties. Okay, stuff happened, stuff didn't happen, the one that wasn't adopted in, in the late nineties, right? That happened, that was in that plan, that did come about, but, and then other things, it's gonna be, this will be no different, it's not for the lack of trying or lack of good intention, it's just the way things. You know, a plan is just that, and it's gotta be, uh, able to be changed.
The other couple things, just to, and these are less. About this, but just looking forward is. Um, well, one about this is I don't necessarily agree, the one in Jessica's about. Requiring people who don't serve on another board commissioner committee. Um, to be on it, I, I don't think that that should be a, a, a. Definitive. On a disqualification, I mean, it may be something that's a sort of a tiebreaker, but, um. I, for, I mean, two reasons, one is I don't. One, you're now, um. Narrowing the pool significantly of people who could be on there. And, uh, secondly. I, you know, I just don't think that. There, there's no. There's no real great difference between someone who is on a board committee, there's no reason why they are sort of focused. On some topic, that topic alone versus someone who's. Not on it, who's coming on this thing, they may very well be focused on one topic and one topic alone, so it doesn't. I, I think they can be equal, I think it should be just dealt with. You know, as the names come up, uh, versus a, a prohibition that is in a charge. Um, it's.
I, I don't think that section is already. Determined its composition, however, I did want to say that I think one of the things I didn't put on here is that they may recommend. That they need more members, because I, looking at all the others, they're, were really skinny.
Except for Milton, which has five. Everyone has more.
Has way more, yeah. So, I mean, in their first annual, I would like that kind of recommendation from them, is that enough? To, to do what you get your feet wet with, is that enough to carry on?
Agreed, and I, I mean, the other part of it is, I still, as I've said before, I still think this should be an independent committee. At the end of the day, but it's still, this is sort of the trial period of how this goes. What is needed, how it plays out, and then.
Yep, and I want them to be independent, but I want them to know what they're being independent about, which is why I was present for this. Some kind of forum for you all to know what you got to do.
So you're looking at what, after a year, kind of reassess everything?
I think you can always do that, to be honest with you, and I just think, um.
I think it should just be, uh, within a year, after the first year, we really need to.
Yeah, and I, and I don't, you know, I think. This is a compromised. A compromised. MP, as far as, you know, who it reports to and what, and I think we'll operate this at arm's length, right, they're gonna go and do their thing. I, I, I hear what Jessica's saying, I would, if you, if you wanted to. If.
With a reference for.
Well, I would just say you wouldn't, there can be no, obviously, it can be no more than one select board member, because then we'd have a select board meeting, just by, because there's only three of us. But there could only be one planning board member, there should, and no more than one member of any other board or commission should be represented on this board, on the MP. Right, so we, we, we have one from conservation, right, he serves on two or three other boards too, but he was a key, key player in the MP. Hence why he's on the, on the MP, I would say, I, I think that's fine, but if suddenly we had. Out of the, you know, two, two public folks, you know, other folks on this thing, that we had two conservation people, I don't think that would be good for the court. And I'm picking on conservation, I just think, name the board, so maybe that, that would be the, the driver there.
I think that's fair, I think that's, I mean, I'm, but I think it also just works out in the wash, right, if you have a bunch of candidates, you're not going to, select board is all lovely, but not gonna say. Let's take the three from conservation, but on, right, I mean. So, uh, it probably narrows itself.
Thanks, perfect sense.
I just want to clarify what I meant by prioritization, facilitating the prioritization. That is among, in my mind, that is among all. I don't know how many party, a hundred and thirty eight parties, no, sorry, yeah, lead action items, a hundred and thirty eight, but out of these five hundred and eighty seven actions, there's some overlap. And I hope that this. Committee. Helps them coordinate similar projects like. Speed limits and the business district and how they want to slow that down, so one. Isn't going off doing this, and another one is at a different time going off doing that, and nothing ever comes together. The way it's planned to come together. Comprehensive attack. For a comprehensive outcome, kinda. That's what I mean by prioritizing among all of those groups.
I assume, I mean, I would assume that. Almost the number one thing. For the committee, once they. Are. Reach full composition is to just sit there and go through all whatever number there are in the master plan. But probably by section, and say. Let's rank these, right, let's, let's put these.
And find like projects and, and pull those together. Because we've already seen one commission want to go and do their thing. Without consulting with. Anybody else in the plan, is what I'm saying.
No, correct, I mean, I think they could prioritize things and then look to see whether.
And, and this document is to go to all of these other people, so that they know that you have. The responsibility to do that and not object to it. Was that clear, what I was getting at in there, or do I need to spell that out a little more in that one? That's identifying the synergies is, who's the common players and things, and how can it be done together, and then prioritizing. What gets done with those common things? Is that clear enough in there, or does that need to be spelled out?
No, I think that's fine.
Well, he heard me say it, so he knows.
Yeah. I'm trying to make sure you get a line, which is everybody. Five different actors or six, whatever it is, a number two folks, you know.
You got a big, you got a big herd of cats there.
Exactly, like I, I mean, like I said, I just, I, my feeling is you get them together, they prioritize things, they look for the synergies. And then they probably send a memo around that says, this is what we see, and let there be feedback, right, and so, and then you can kind of get this. You know, um, everybody has a bias. I don't. That to me is, I'm not honest, I do, I'll do what I want, I would, I would do it, okay?
Yeah, we need to say that they have the authority to call meetings, because I don't think anybody has really.
Do you mean to call like the planning board into a meeting?
No, to call a meeting or.
I think that's inherent. Yeah, absolutely.
I, I mean, to call in other. Players here. Of all the responsible parties.
I'm not sure I would necessarily go. Yeah. I mean, I would.
I would imagine that they. Create, um, like said, an initial memo of here are our first steps, this is what we are observing.
Yeah.
And then come and present it if necessary to a particular board, if there's questions if needed, but. I can't imagine trying to coordinate five person MP schedule, and then trying to demand other boards go to you.
No, I mean, I think that, that rarely becomes a problem, me, Doug, obviously, uses to show up. I mean, it's, um, no, 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 it's never, it's, I can't think of the time that that's really. Uh, we tried, well, we did try to get the. Building inspector, well, building inspector showed up to one of my meetings, I refuse, but, um. Other than that, I don't think, I can't think of a time where you've said.
No.
And you can always show up at their meetings.
Hundred percent, and then also that's a part of, you know, I think.
To get the buy in.
Correct, and if, if you need to go to another meeting, you know, maybe. I don't know how often this. And we didn't really establish cadence, that'll be up to the MP, they've established a cadence of, of meetings, but let's say they meet. Twice a month or once a month in the summer, I don't know, but. Perhaps one of their meetings, they, they might move their meeting to a night that that board that they want to meet with is meeting, and have their meeting before or after the appointment time. Just to make it convenient for, for all involved, rather than, you know, like you guys are, are you meeting tomorrow?
No.
No.
I just saved you a trip, Mr. Doherty, um, but you know what I mean, if you're, you know, you had to come in tonight, and you were in last week, and then you met the following night, right, yeah, so. Glad we had, glad we had this chat. Um, but you know what I mean, so they can, they, they could be flexible with that, you know, because I think there is going to be a ton of interaction with other boards, and there's going to be probably meetings where. You may have multiple boards get together, you know.
For the coordination portion.
Yeah, to talk about, you know, longer range things that are going to be impactful to say. You know. Can't even pick it out, but you know, zoning and other bylaws that may, may need to come in front of town meeting at, at some point in the future, so.
Alright.
Anything you want in there?
No.
Anything else? So how do we marry these together?
So, I, I'd make a motion to have Diane and, and Ms. Thornton get together and come back with a consolidated statement for us to adopt.
Make that motion.
Second.
It's gonna be my suggestion, but I didn't want to take lead on it.
I mean, you guys are pretty, you, if you really read these, they're pretty close.
That's exactly what I see, and we didn't do these together.
This is a cangamon coffee meeting. You know, or some other coffee establishment.
I think between the two of us, we can get that done in ten minutes where.
Bring them participation for at least.
Yep. I know, I, I know how you.
But these are so close, I mean, it's not like you guys have, you, you will not have a flight, it's fight at the flagpole tomorrow, too, this.
No, we weren't supposed to do it.
Just get the things figured out that you guys are gonna talk about.
I wrote down your comments, I got them. We'll make a date. Okay, thank you, congratulations. You don't have like when you do.
You showed up and got nominated.
Everybody agrees that we're telling Sutton that he got nominated.
A hundred percent. Text them, I was gonna say, I'll text them.
Thank you.
So, we're gonna go back. Just wanted to inform you that Mr. Moran is on. Line, and I see the chief here. Put on Mr. Moran.
Certainly, I apologize for the confusion, um, Mr. Moran was supposed to be online at six thirty this evening, had a commitment earlier on. And I was unaware that the, uh, hearing that just happened was not the first thing on the agenda, which, you know, it's a whole mix up there, so my apologies. Um, Leon's on, we're now entertaining a vote, but I figured it would work well while he's available, uh, to get to you.
Hey, guys, how's it going?
Good, yourself, sir?
Ah, not too bad, run, run it all around.
Do you want to give us a little input on yourself and why you want to do the per diem call stuff?
So I am, uh. Been, been in fire for about five years, I work over in Westfield, as paramedic. Um. Love what I do, looking for some side work, because they're conveniently close. Get a good department. Host a lot of trainings, solves all that seems to jive real well with me, and. The people I have met that do work with you guys are, are great. And I, I guess, about me, uh, I got four kids, been married for twelve years. And I got a dog.
And you work in Westfield now?
Yes.
Okay, so all, all positive.
No recruiting out of our department, sir.
What are you guys talking about, you're pulling our guy.
That's okay.
Alright, that's good, Mr. Moran, thank you for, for zooming in and getting, letting us to get to talk to you quickly.
Absolutely, thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Alrighty, you guys have a good night.
You do as well. You do as well.
Make a motion to ratify our previous vote.
I'll second that.
We'll call both Jason Pearl and I.
Dan Gali.
Doug Mogul and I. We also have to do the appointments of the poll workers.
I want to add that no recruiting thing in there. It's important. Thank you, chief. You guys have drill tonight?
So. We can do this as an omnibus, can't we?
Just read the list like we do the others.
So, all right, we're, we're gonna be looking, we're gonna be looking to make, uh, get a motion to appoint the following people as election officers. The November fifth, twenty twenty four state election, we're gonna have a warden Juliet Mason, assistant warden Paul Conley. Assistant ward in Sandra Organowski, poll worker Veronica Conley, poll worker Carol Loughlin. Poll worker Elaine Bush, Bushard. Poll worker Terrence Mish, poll worker Kirk Sanders, poll worker Sandra Heap. Poll worker Harold Heap, poll worker Ronald Bennett, poll worker Bruce Mason, poll worker Albert Renzio. Poll worker Deborah Renzio, poll worker Daryl Sack. Poll worker Kathy Leary, poll worker Kathleen Fishbach. Poll worker Mark Madrew, poll worker Mary Madrew, poll worker Karen Shute. Poll worker Karen De Mayo, poll worker Jessica Thornton, poll worker Rosalyn Terry, poll worker Susan Gillen. Student poll worker Jackson Phillips, student poll worker Chloe Phillips. Student poll worker Brenna Holly and student poll worker Maggie Dickinson.
Make a motion to appoint the poll workers as red off.
Doug Mogul will second the motion.
We'll call both Jason Pearl and I.
Dan Gali.
Doug Mogul, yes. Let me ask a question. Why, why did we do that? I don't recall ever doing it and we, this year we made it a, we didn't.
Maybe Chrissy didn't know. I didn't, I don't know. Chris said I need to get them appointed.
I get it. I just, I'm just asking the question so we, we.
I guess.
Kind of be consistent. Yeah. Maybe we could save two hundred bucks and ask, answer the question. I don't know. You know what I mean? It was just seemed like we just changed the policy. This year on, we, we didn't reappoint all the, the folks and then we just did this. Uh, maybe it's for elections and you have to do it. I, I don't know. That's why I was asking.
Employee work.
We didn't read the names of all the, yeah, right, all the employees. These are town employees for, at least for the day. They're poll workers. They're gonna get paid. So I don't, I don't know. It's all good. I just. When I was reading my pack and I was like, my, I, I, maybe there's an election rule to do it. Shame on us. We never did it before now.
Make a point to get a definitive answer regardless. Um, whole business, we already take care of A. Item B is to appoint Daniel Fernandez supervisor of buildings and grounds. We had obviously his interview last meeting, so, um. Assuming everybody was in consensus on him as far as.
I was.
And Mr. Mogul?
Yeah.
Making a motion to appoint Dan Fernandez as the supervisor of buildings and grounds.
Roll call both Jason Pearl and I.
Dan Gali.
Doug Mogul, yeah. I don't know. Randy, DPW solid waste analysis.
So over the summer, you asked me to look into transitioning to curbside pickup for trash and. Well, I did this analysis maybe five years ago, kind of a high level review. And I updated that, uh, with what you have in front of you. I came up with, you know, basically five dental options. Um, first option is to keep our current structure. Right? We have, uh, our transfer stations open to residents, you know, if they choose to go curbside. There are several vendors, private vendors that they're there for that service. Uh, option two was to transition our curbside collection through a third party vendor. So we would contract, we would develop an RFP, we would contract with one vendor. And they would be through the town, uh, they would collect trash recyclables, um, curbside from all, all, all residents. Um, and at the same time, we also keep our transportation open for all of our recyclable items that we don't, that's not normally collected through, uh, curbside. Option three was to transition to curbside collection, but by town staff. We would have our own staff, our own equipment, our vehicles, uh, that would collect recyclables and deliver them to a facility. And then also keep our transportation open for all those, what I call hard recycle items. Uh, I, I, option four is to kind of okay town step taking out, stepping away from the trash business. Um, we would leave it up to the homeowner to coordinate with a vendor to collect trash and recyclables and tra- uh, through a third party vendor themselves. But we keep, we would keep our facility open for the harder recycle items. Then option five is a basically run of trash process entirely. So every resident is on their own. Um, so I gave you, um, like I said, this is more of a high level analysis. Looking at the cost of each option and I did that on this table here, and I can compare options to each other. Um, I don't know what, uh, you wanna time in, where you're at?
Well, you got option two. Um, cost to the third party vendor, six hundred and eighty thousand. What is that source? Is that really a quote from someone? Assuming two hundred dollars a year in a contract?
Yep. So I talked to a couple of our, uh, uh, neighboring communities who have that, that option. And, uh, their, their cost per household is two hundred dollars per household per year with the go, average. So I, I, I basically put that towards our, we have, um, one thousand nine hundred and fifty households in town.
So they use that as a build in their tax rate, like on your tax bill, they're using that rough number as a cost?
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a cost of the town, right? So they would just, it was paid out through the tax rate, correct? The residents aren't paying anything extra off of their tax bill.
I get it.
Yeah, that comes out to thirty four hundred households, which makes more sense. We have thirty nine hundred in the master building.
Uh, I'm sorry, thirty four hundred, yeah, my, my, I looked different over here.
But what's the population?
So this year we had nineteen hundred and fifty households with a sticker. Yeah, so yeah, total house is three thousand three hundred and fifty four. My apologies.
And what's the population of the towns that you asked?
Uh, Long Meadow, East Long Meadow, we have the contacts over there. They're probably a little more suburban than Sapphicus, so our costs may be a little higher than them, just because of route from house to house maybe a little longer.
And then that's their pickup, but then you also have refuse fees. That's in addition to the pickup or is that the recyclable refuse fee?
No, the town, that's the trash recyclable fee. So we own the trash. Once we collect it, we, the town owns it, so we have to dispose of it.
That we were talking about today, the.
So the pickup is, they don't, so the, we get a, well, we have through this option two, we would have a bill to our third party vendor for trash pickup. Say it's Republic. Okay, and then we also have a, they're gonna pick up the, the trash.
And recycled.
And recyclables, yeah, and they're gonna bring it to a facility.
Yep.
Um, and that facility will build a town per ton of recyclables. So the vendors, the vendor is literally. I'm sorry, yeah, that's.
It's, it's not included. They pay that themselves.
Yeah, we, we pay, we own the trash, we pay the trash directly, yeah. So right now, you can see our rest, rest of these hot bill is two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, option one, right? So that's only about half of the town.
Yep.
So now that we're collecting the whole town.
My question had that increase two hundred.
Yep.
Okay, okay.
Would it double?
Well, it's about fif- about fifty five percent of our town is owned, uh, as part of our transportation.
Right, but would it, this would not include anybody who would be ineligible to. I don't know that it would exactly double. Maybe I'm, I'm off on my math, but like apartments and condos and those places that already have trash pickup. They, they're not, they don't get a dump sticker, so they're not in the number and they wouldn't be eligible for this type of arrangement anyway, unless we worked out something as part of a greater contract that they could pay into to do it, right?
Hmm.
Same thing with, you know, commercials not in, this is just. But like, you know, the apartments and condo complexes and stuff that they're not, th- those households are in our number, but they wouldn't be part of this program. Yeah, and maybe we're rearranging deck chairs on the Titanic and they're small numbers, but then when you get down to brass tacks, they're not small.
And in other towns, I see they have their name on the trash bin. Well, they do in Agewone, but Agewone picks up their own, right? That's town.
They, I believe they're on town, those, yeah.
So.
We have to buy, we have to buy the bins. So the bins, uh, and we can go, we can.
East Long Meadow, they had to buy them as well.
You could buy them, yeah, yeah. And you have some available if someone loses it or they get lost. Uh, but a cost for a ninety six gallon cart is sixty two dollars. The cost for a sixty gallon cart is fifty five, almost fifty six dollars. And the cost for a thirty gallon cart is fifty two dollars. So we would assume every household gets two carts. And then we also got to pay, there's a three dollar per cart sticker signage, so that's on top of the. That's the recycling trash second containers with four hundred thousand dollars. That's in options two and three, that's what that is. The carts themselves.
Of the nineteen hundred year to date, well, fifty of those were seniors. You gotta think their refuse is kind of small. So again, splitting hairs, but the refuse might really be two hundred when you get full families in there as well.
I don't know, it, it, good point. The half the stickers are senior stickers, thereabouts, right?
Yep.
Um, but that only implies that only one person in the household has to be of that age to qualify for a senior sticker and more and more. You've got larger families living with one older relative moving in with them or others coming home to live with them that drive that number. So I'm not a hundred percent sure I buy that.
Plus minus.
That, yeah, that it would be a significant decrease in trash.
Yep.
Do they charge the different rates for the different sizes or no? It's just one set fee regardless.
Different size a lot.
The containers.
Yeah, the containers are, are very, they, they're.
I guess we would decide that, right?
Set, right, cause I, and did a little bit of research, some places do do a little bit different where if you're, are a smaller one person household and your trash is X amount, you only gets this, so. I just was curious if whoever you could be ones you thought, talked to do a different.
I think most are, yeah, most
I know.
towns have that sixty gallon for trash and the ninety six.
Everybody's the same. I don't know if it's different. And I know like, it's really no difference as far as price, but in Westfield you have the different sizes barrels based, based on your household and how much trash you uh, create.
Hmm.
So you're the DPW guy, how do you feel about all this? What are you thinking?
I mean, I like our current setup. I think it provides options, options for residents. If you want curbsides, it's available. There's several vendors out there that, uh, provide the service. This came in the mail maybe a month ago, you know, I don't know if you guys look familiar, but you know, thirty bucks a month for, uh, trash weekly and recyclables biweekly. That's four hundred and fifty dollars, which is probably a startup cost, you know, buying cost, but there's, the rates I see from other, other vendors are five, six hundred dollars a year. But if, uh, you want to save some money and, uh, you don't mind bringing the trash and recyclables to the transfer station, that's option for you to do all, so. I like, I like.
It's not really an option for some people who can't do that, who can't get there. So it's not an option for everybody necessarily. And some people are forced to pay more for outside service because they can't get there physically or for whatever reason, work wise attitude, who knows? So it isn't available to everybody as much as we'd like to say that. It is if they can banagel it, but physically, some people can't. Um. One option could also be contracting it out and not keeping our transfer station for hard to recycle. And where would that go? Would that go through the third party vendor?
Problem is, there's very few vendors that pick up those things on a household, household basis. If you go to Westfield, I think they have a bulky waste day, right?
It's very similar to here. You still have a, depending on what you're bringing, a per, per sticker charge, which is significantly more. Or depending on the item you're bringing there at the old transfer station and, you know, it's, it's still a, still a cost.
But it's not open all year.
No, you can, you have bulky ways that you can do, there's certain things that you can bring, but you, like here, you can get a sticker at any time and drop off around, um, a refrigerator or a mattress or a propane tank or whatever, so.
Yep.
Um. Yeah, like Randy said, I know, just in talking about dumpsters and whatnot in the construction world the other side. Then it become problematic because you see somebody start throwing oil or anything that's not supposed to be in there, you're gonna start getting fines and whatnot, um.
We collect a lot of recyclables too. If you, if you compare what we take in or we can take in versus other towns. We take in as much as the larger cities, you know, in terms of mercury products, electronics, to a tires, oil, and we take almost everything you can think of. The only things that we don't take that some towns do are, uh, styrofoam, which there's no cost to styrofoam, it goes in the trash, it weighs nothing. Uh, we have it cut, cut, cut back on paint because we had issues with paint getting in the upper and creating a mess. And we previously had issues with oil, um, some contaminated materials getting in our oil drum. So we're gonna looking out for that. But we take a lot of stuff. I think residents in town do appreciate that. Um, a lot more than most towns do take. I, I wouldn't want to lose that.
Well, I, I just know from my years across the border that, you know, one of the things we have here, you know, we have the metal bin that you can throw stuff in anytime. There's only, like you said, there's certain days of the week you can go. And it's, you know, it's one dump off spot where they get the, the loader and they sort through the store. So that's why. I understand what Diane's saying, but I'm kind of of the mindset just to leave things alone. If it's broken, don't fix it.
Is it a people of the town question? Which would they rather pay for? Outside service or is this something they would rather have the town do for that price? Many people complain we don't have town curbside trash pickup. Do they need to know how much it costs?
Oh, I would say definitely put this information out. If people are asking, you know, we can put this out as a comparison, and we can go right on the website if people are interested, you know, there's been some discussion. You know, regarding this topic, or we can do an informational meeting or something if we want to do something for seriously entertaining the stuff.
To play devil's advocate for one moment. I think there's half the sentence that's usually set, that's usually mentioned around the fact that we don't have residential trash pickup. And there's nothing to do with, and I, you know, I use the transfer station that me and Chairman Doherty are usually the last two guys there on Saturday. Um, but I think a lot of people say our tax rate is X and we don't even pick up the trash and it doesn't include water or sewer or this or that or the other. That's the other half of the sentence. It's not the fact that we don't have trash. They're questioning the value of their overall tax dog, so we're not gonna solve that tonight, obviously, but that's something to be cognizant of as, you know, as part of the discussion, like that thirty eight dollars a month. That's, that's actually very, that's a reasonable price compared to some of the others that are out there. They're usually, you know, almost double that for some of them. Um, and it's a convenience item and it, and there is, there's something to be said for that. People pay for convenience all the time for different things. Right? People have food delivered, people have this delivered, you know, this is more pickup, but, um. I, I'm, I'm not dissatisfied with the arrangement. I do hear what Diane's saying is that there is a certain population that can't literally can't get trash to the transfer station, and I think that's a, a topic of, to be discussed. Um, I know I went to, um, Mass Municipal, probably five years ago, and I think it was Republic or one of those one, I'm like, hey, can you come and give us a price to just take the whole thing over, right? We'll give you the keys. We have to talk to the town and everything else, but it was a great, you know, cuz we had heard the same. Same ask and, and the numbers weren't much different than this and there's just no way to.
The other thing I'm gonna bring up is that I know when Wes Springfield did it. They got sold the bill of goods and then five years later, when the contract ran out, it. Almost doubled.
Sure.
So, you know, I'm, I am, I kinda think I'm, me, me and Mr. Mullen might be on the same thought. Thought line here where, you know. It's the, the residents. Something they're ultimately interested in, you know, really, I, I'd wanna hear from them. But I, I'm not inclined to change anything at the moment.
I'm certainly wasn't.
Oh, no, 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 I know, I understand.
I think there needs to be some kind of presentation to the, available to the public to know what those options look like. And. You know, down to this is how much it would cost on the average tax bill if we did it this way.
That's, that would be the ultimate.
So people know we looked at it. And asked their opinion on it. And if they, if. They all come back and say, yeah, I'm willing to do that, then we have to rethink that and. Consider it.
So I guess you could finish the sentence and drive this back. The, these, thank you for doing this, Randy, is take these numbers. Put it on the tax rate and tell people it's gonna cost you this much a year. Divide that by thirty-eight dollars and figure out if we're ahead or behind. And then.
I think in some kind of presentation.
Hundred percent, but that's gonna be straightforward math, right?
Questions.
The older I get, the more I realize that the answer to every question is a math problem.
It is.
And this is exactly one of them cuz the numbers are disparate. But when you really start to bake it down and go, okay, this is.
A cup of coffee a day.
Oh my god, if I hear that one more time in my life. But you know, here you say this is gonna be a total annual expense of one point four million. Plus four hundred thousand, this one's gonna be a million plus two million to start it up. Okay, do the math. You know, put that, you know, bond out that, that two million and then, you know. Put one point four in the budget.
You know.
Divide that and say, this is what it would be on your tax rate.
You know. You, you, we could be surprised where people say, fine, if. The current five seventy goes away and I'm responsible for getting my own trash from this guy for thirty-two bucks. So I'm surprised to hear the majority say they would prefer that. To reduce their taxes, whatever it would reduce.
Be, and yes, but and I'll echo my, uh. One of my predecessors on this board, cuz we do carry a good chunk and we, you know, this comes up every now and again. We carry a portion of the transfer station on the tax rate. For absolute health reasons, you need to have peo- a place for people to bring their trash. Right? If you don't have options or you're gonna force people into something like this, you will find. Trash in the woods, you will find burn barrels, you will find all kinds of different ways people will. Dispose your trash and Randy is a hundred percent correct. We, you know, the recycling of the. The mercury and the uh, smoke detectors and batteries and so on and so forth. And I'm, you know. Curious to see how it goes with paint cuz, you know, that's, you know, it, it. It makes a mess if, if, if it isn't cared for correctly, but. If it were dried, it should be able to be tossed away. The problem is it's not always dried and then it makes a big bloody mess. But um, I wanna make sure that we're not, you know, we don't have, have a problem with people dumping paint.
Again, up there, there's been times when I've had to go in my professional capacity, people will pull up to the dump and literally dump. All over right in front of the dump. Well, you know, it's all over the place, I've.
But there's a really solid reason why that transfer station exists and, you know, to do what it does. And, you know, we do, so we do cover some of the, so, and so some of the cost is on the tax rate. You know. We talk about it every budget season, it's not a secret. I think it's a bargain. I mean, for what I pay to bring the, the, uh, you know, my household trash once a week. Or every other week to the transfer station for. And, and I do not yet qualify for the senior rate, so I'm paying the full price. I, I think it's an absolute bargain. I think we do have to look at what you can do for folks that can't.
I was gonna say, is there some, something we can, is, do you know of anything, Nicole?
I do not.
Anything where we could look into.
Take people's, to go to people's houses and pick up trash.
Well, maybe not necessarily that, but something along that lines where we could get a larger. Town supply barrel and then we figure something out, I mean. Never, never heard to look into it, I don't.
But just to boil it down, just to keep the discussion moving on, I would. Somebody needs to take this and kinda boil it down and say, this is what the impact on the tax rate for all of these things would be. And add the existing picture in there cuz the subsidy. On the transfer station is, as part of the budget calculation, we know those numbers. So you could take the number of stickers we sold. And then we know the percentage of senior and non-senior, so we know the revenue side, we know the subsidy side. You just add one more, you know, option, it's really option A, which is, or you know, it's option one flushed out a little bit.
So is that something you? Could pull together some presentation and is it something we can put in a stuffer with the next? What's the next thing we're gonna do?
Do that or we could, you know, this would be one of those thing, yeah, you could do that and just have a link to it from the, from the town webpage.
Stuff it into the census forms.
I don't see a problem with that, but.
You know, with the thing that says, you know, this has been asked a number of times, we'd like to.
We also did something with the cannabis online, did we not? If I remember right, wasn't there? What was it?
It is kind of a, that was actually, uh, that was, that was a stuffer in the.
Stuffer as well, actually, it was, they, they posted. But there was also an online.
That was a survey we did, yeah, yeah, you could do it that way. We did it online and, you know, on paper, we did both.
Yep. So, you know, that's some, that's something that we could, we could announce that.
Not next week.
Just uh, we're researching.
So I go working, Nicole, on the.
Okay.
Kinda putting this in a more readable format. With some numbers associated with the tax rate, impacts the tax rate, tax rate. And then you wanna have a survey also on the, like, so, so we could have a document with the, with the information and the bill stuff for him and then. We want your input, here's a survey on the town website.
Interest. Do that or even just to, you know, maybe we could create an email box for it.
Yeah.
So that you could, could take that feedback, you know.
Now, which, I guess, which option are you looking, I mean, I give you.
I'd like to see the data in, in, in that format just first and then say, okay, this is what it would be on the tax rate. So people can actually, cuz this is, this, you know it, right? Thirty-eight dollars a month, right? Simple. But if we say, okay. We're gonna increase our municipal services to include, you know, pick up your trash. And then people get their tax bill and it's seven hundred dollars more a year. What part of that is a tax increase? What part of that is? Full-time ALS, what part of that is the trash?
What you asked for.
Yeah, but and what you passed a town meeting in the budget too, right? So that's really. You know, before you bake it into the budget, cuz then if you go to town meeting and they approve it. Well, and then that's let, you know, legislative. Legislatively set the policy of the town. But I, I think there's plenty of feedback to be gotten. People said, okay, this is going to be, you know, forty bucks a month I can pay or it's gonna be, you know. Sixty dollars a month on my taxes, well. Becomes a pretty easy decision. And then you do, and you know, Diane, I do hear what you're saying about the. The folks that can't get there and, you know, perhaps there is some other. For a lot less money than this. I, I, mine, that's true too, like even we were talking about the bulky stuff, right?
Yeah.
The bulky is kind of interesting because. There's probably more people that can't get their bulky stuff to the transfer station that can get their trash to the transfer station. So maybe there's something that can be thought up for that, that would be a whole lot less expensive. To do on some kind of infrequent basis.
Um, oh, you mentioned it.
You know, I'm not talking about picking up household trash cuz that.
No, no, absolutely.
You know. You know, that, that can be done, but you know, for those that cannot. Physically get to the transfer station because of, you know, the lack of a vehicle, lack of transportation, blah, blah, blah. Maybe, you know, rather than go and implementing townwide trash pickup, maybe we could figure out a way to. Figure out some other solution for that.
Well, that could be, if we do something on the website, then that can be another question. Can you get there? Even if you, even if you don't use it, why don't you, can't you get there? What are your barriers there, blah, blah, blah? So. Okay. Thank you for at least looking at it and.
Yes, thanks.
People will be surprised at the answers, I'm sure.
Good problem.
Appreciate it.
All right. Item D of our business. HSIC, High-Speed Internet Committee, IMA. Mr. Moblin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So. High-Speed Internet Subcommittee met. Week ago, Thursday, finally got it formed together of the, of, of most of everyone on the, on the committee. And. There was. We have a couple of things coming our way and we have a couple uh, points for the, the select board to consider. So the board took a motion. And um, the motion was for the, the select board. To put forth a warrant article at the annual. For the entire bonding, necessary bonding amount for the project. Not to borrow the money at once, but to authorize the town to go and do that borrow. The reason being, and that's first and foremost. We have the numbers. The numbers tell us that we're very, very close to be break even. With the absolute worst-case scenario, and I'll say that couple, here's that cup of coffee thing again, right? But with what we estimate to be the worst-case scenario for the make-ready cost at about four point four million dollars. Um, if the make-ready costs are significantly lower or, or lower than the four point four million dollars than the. And, and at the take rate we're estimating. The project would be, you know. Not a burden to the town. So we'll have a better idea of that number when it comes back from, we've completed all the poll applications there in. You've seen the folks around doing the poll surveys, you know, slow-moving cars all over town. They are looking at that to. Complete the make-ready estimate. So what they're saying is. Okay, town. And, and I said this to this, this board, I've been telling the, the high-speed internet sub and they're, they're. Uh, also saying the same thing is that, once we step off. You have to finish. You cannot get cold feet. You have to go and do the whole project. And, you know, the analogy that keeps coming up is the sewers, right? It's a very similar situation. If we go and do two fiber hoods and then decide that, oh boy, this is not gonna work out. Or we don't think it's gonna work out and the town meeting then does not authorize the future funding to finish the project. Then the project is doomed and you're gonna be on the hook for. You know, at least. You know, what you bonded for and what you built out and that service will have no hope of ever covering its cost. Cuz you have a significant startup cost, just to make ready work alone is four million dollars, you know. Somewhere in that hunt for four million bucks. You'll never, you'll never dig out of the hole. Um, so their suggestion is. To go ahead to town meeting. For the bonding authorization. To allow the town to borrow up to, and I think the indebted, max indebted, indebted number, I can't say, it's fifteen million bucks. Right? And it will never, you know, it, at the peak amount of borrowed, that's where it'll be. You're never gonna borrow that all at once. You're gonna borrow it over the course of construction. You'll borrow, construct your fiber hood. And then, you know, move on to the next and you'll have multiple fiber hoods. I think there's eighteen of them, you know, in, under construction at, at a various amount of time. The second suggestion is um, that the town establish. If we're going to do that, if the board will vote to do that. That the town. That, that this board then recharter. Um, or recharge, I guess is the appropriate word based on what we did tonight. Recharge the high-speed internet sub. With some, some, some kind of governance over the service.
To become MLP.
Sorry?
To become the MLP.
Well, that's, that's a subject for this board, right? We're, we're the, we're water commissioner, or we're not water commissioners, we're sewer commissioners, road commissioners, we're dog hearing officers. Are we the de facto MLP? Yes. Should we, do we wanna delegate that? Do we wanna make it an appointed board? Or do you just wanna have an advisory subcommittee for that? For some, you know, a board that's gonna meet on some regular basis to advise the select, the MLP on. Things that they need to be doing or should be doing, hear complaints, take kudos, whatever. And then there's also going to be, at some point, there's, and it's in the, in the number, there is a budget to have some administrative support. In the town to support the project. Now, most of it's, you know, is outsourced, the billing and, and yada, yada is all outsourced. But there is certain other, other tasks that will need to be undertaken. Um, lastly is uh, probably another group of town officials because it involves multiple departments. Um, needs to get together and figure out we're gonna put a hut. I have my idea, but obviously buildings and grounds and the police department, fire department have to be party to that cuz it's gonna be on probably near their turf. And we have to make sure that, you know. We're not heavy-handed and just go, hey, I'm gonna put this here. We need to.
Huh? How much space does that?
It's, it's not large. It's, it's smaller than a shipping container type of thing. So it's, it, it's actually probably half of one. Um, in size. The um. We talked about this a lot with the provider at Whip City cuz we have space that we could probably put it. In somewhere in the fire department or even town hall. The issue is, is that you need to be able to get at that facility twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. And if the chance of them needing to get at that facility. At a time when our public safety people are busy is high. So therefore, you can't say, oh, we'll have it at the fire department cuz there's always someone there. No, they're gonna be out clearing roads or dealing with whatever the aftermath of the event. That led to them needing to get into the hut at an inopportune time. Therefore, it makes sense to have it externally, externally accessible. By our contractor without giving them access to. The fire department or town hall or whatever.
So same for DPW. If there's crap going on there in and out of the yard as well.
Also true, and DPW is not really an appropriate location. Uh, for the fiber hut, this, we wanna be right here in the center. There's multiple access avenues to get on and off the fiber from here. And, and there's a couple of other things. There's also, um, well, they have a generator there too, but the nor- it's too far north. It needs to be on the campus here.
Okay.
That's the short of it.
Well, since we just talked about the numbers and what it actually looks like.
Can we talk, can I ask a question on the numbers before you?
Yeah, go ahead.
Or were you?
That's what I was going to ask. It just has anybody. Taken a look at, I mean. If this fifteen, fifteen million dollar bond, what's it gonna cost us in the short term on tax rate?
Well, before you get there, let's talk about the fifteen million on your presentation here. The, the poll survey you said is in, the poll applications are in process. Is that the same as the poll survey?
Yes, I believe so.
And that is sixty grand. Here it says, right, the poll survey, sixty grand?
What, uh, Nicole had, I, I'm going to put Nicole on the spot, but we've, what have we?
It's probably around fifty.
Yeah.
With spent, that we have spent.
Spent on the applications and the, and the work so far.
Expected sixty, we probably spent fifty.
And from that, that's the older presentation from around twenty twenty, right? The big thing, the big surprise, not, which is not at all.
This is the twenty twenty?
Which, I don't, I can't even see that far, guys, sorry.
Oh, that whole thing was twenty twenty.
Yeah, this goes back a bit, so.
That'll explain why.
The surprise that's not a surprise is that the cost of the project is just about doubled.
That's what I was gonna say, so where are you getting fifteen?
No, that's exactly, well, that's, like I said, worst-case estimate. That was a, 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 a bad case estimate, pre-COVID.
Oh.
Everything's about double. And what our numbers are showing us after we met with our, we had a, a team that didn't involve myself, that. Crunched numbers and came back to the board. Then they brought Whip City back in to go over the numbers that we came up with.
Those was those three different scenario and dot numbers.
Yeah, and you know, we were talking about this take rate and that take rate and this amount of work and it, it really comes down to your plus or minus fifty thousand bucks, right? And he, and you go, okay. If the make-ready is not four point four million dollars. You're on Easy Street. And by the way, the indebtedness part is not. It's meant to be one hundred percent paid by users of the service. This is not something that's going to make money for the town, but it's not going to be. An expense to the town people. It's supposed to be paid back from revenues from the service. Hence why our price is where it is, right? Cuz it has to service the debt, right? The. Did I answer your question?
Are, are you answering his question? So, so the fifteen million on, on. The borrowing will not be in. The tax bill is what you're saying.
No. It's just like, it would, it's almost gonna look like an enterprise fund. It'd look like the water.
Because you're gonna borrow this as you need it, as each hub, each fiber network, fiber hood comes on.
Like I said, once we start, we gotta finish.
But you got, you gotta go all the way. You cannot be, I, I, I probably use some other. Less public analogies about this, right? But you can't be a little pregnant on this. You're, once you're in, you're in. And you have to finish cuz if not, you're doomed. As far as it, it will be, it will be for another tax rate.
It all assumes your take rate is accurate.
Yeah. And then, and that was the survey data was from, it goes back to twenty twenty, but I, you know, everything that's told us, that really hasn't changed. You know, the options. In my opinion.
Can I just give you my observations on that? In twenty twenty, you had two hundred and sixty five results. Out of seventy three hundred registered voters, technically users. That's three point six percent response. That said. Of overwhelmingly, they said yes. Um, for whatever reasons they use it. That's pretty low to say. I'm not comfortable and I've told you, I'm not, I don't feel comfortable with that fifty percent in in my experience in. My prior life, that was tough to get fifty percent. Really tough. And then I had mentioned how many of those are seniors. That they don't care, they don't even know what you're talking about and are never going to move off of what they have.
Is the cost to the the there'd be a cost per resident to bring it to the house, right?
That was another question I had. Are the drop? Costs included in your fifteen million or is that totally separate?
There's a, there is a base number. Yeah, but there's certain, there's going to be some houses that it's going to. You know what I mean? Because and you're on your own for that, right? We're going to come so far or we're going to, you know, we're say, look, we'll do this. But this is, this is what the installation is going to cost and you get a credit of this against it. You have to pay the rest if you want the service.
Like as. Internet itself is like, you know, it's something that obviously everybody wants. It's just like. Well.
Not true.
And you're right, not everybody wants it. But I would have to say in this day and age, I did hear Mr. Mogul talking about, I mean, it's it. It has become a necessity in some ways, but again, you know.
Internet has.
Yes, you make the analogy with the sewer. It's like, this is, I'm I'm like teetering on the edge. It's like it's because then, like I said, you said, we don't get fifty percent take rate. We've started. Then we're paying for seventy five percent of that fifteen million don bond is going to be subsidized.
Whip City, Whip City is taking fifty percent in their in Westfield. Right? Their rates a little low. They're getting north of fifty percent and their newer fiber hoods are are above that. Their rates lower. Put the asterisk in full disclosure, their rate is lower. Um, and some of the other towns that Whip City has done, I don't feel are comparable. They walk around with their take rate. Our take rate's ninety six percent. Well, you're the only option. So that's not really fair, right? We are a served community, right? Well, that was one. The state money came in and they, you know, they they rained state money down on that project and did it and now people are. They have no choice. If you want internet, here's your phone, one phone call. We're in that boat right now with Comcast.
Can I touch on that for a second? Again, in my previous life. We were Comcast was the only option because the towns only licensed one provider. Are we still in control of licensing those providers? Can we? Open it to other providers?
Think we do. So there's, there's two, two, two parts that's unpacked. I looked at that when we first started the high speed internet. There is no limit. Anyone, anyone wants to come in right now and construct a fiber network in the town of Southwick, you're more than welcome to do it. Anyone can do it, okay? One of the reasons we finished the poll applications such as it were. Was that once you start making rumblings about it, other private entities may come in to try to do it. Um, and then it starts moving people around on polls and if you only have a certain amount of capacity on polls. You end up making it, you turn it into an arms race. No one has, we we reached out to. Two, at least two other companies during covid and just uh, just after. To have that conversation and say, here you go, let's do it. I even offered it to Whip City, like guys can have it, knock yourself out. You have all the revenue, you can have everything. No taker. And a charter or whatever, historically, they will not come into a town that's served by one other. But our contract that we have. Um, first of all, the the uh, internet is largely unregulated in the town. The cable franchise we have is non-exclusive. We just renewed it. I know we're going to be renewing it again. It seems like we just renewed it. We did a three year deal. It is completely non-exclusive. Anybody, if Carter wanted to show up tomorrow and said, we're going to do this, they're more than welcome.
That was my first year on is when we did the the cable thing and I was, I remember.
I think I asked that same. And we talked about, I I I know we did talk about.
Why can't we get anybody else?
Whip City does not want to come in and take that space.
They really can't. Because they're they're. They're a quasi governmental agency. They really can't. Bond ten million or fifteen million dollars to construct something. Out of their town. The other, all the other towns, they either got state money. Or they bonded their own to construct and now what and Whip City is the operator of their network, which is exactly what we're proposing to do.
Okay.
And the other thing that we they're looking at. Um, and we still have some questions and answers to come back on is just technologically, right? Things are moving along. You know, gigabit symmetrical. Um, and a bit of its marketing speak, to be very honest with you, if we went, you know, we can support more than one gigabit with the fiber we're putting up. Proposing to put up, actually can go up to, I think, close to ten. There's no need to go for that expense right now to offer that service. You you will offer it to some businesses that will pay an outside's. Uh, amount of money for that bandwidth. Um, but from a residential use, it doesn't make sense. From a marketing perspective, there's some benefit to offering like a two gig service because. The other company, the other company in town offers a gigabit down service. That's not quite that and it's way less on the up. Um, and so for those that need significant bandwidth on the upside, there is not a a great adequate op other option. Um, business customers have some options right now because they do have some fiber options, but for residential, there's not much of an option.
But you're. I I listened to each of your meetings and I'm trying to hear reasons to convince me that this. Is something I would do. And they're not able to do that. They said at your last one that most people aren't going to notice darn thing.
No, on the up, for the customers that need it, it's it's an absolute benefit. For the customers that don't need it, you you won't really, you it will not be usually impactful. This net is going to be cost driven. Um, and reliability driven and it's going to drive, it's going to drive competition. Heck, it's driving some competition now. You've seen the mailings. I mean, somebody brought it into the high speed internet meeting right now. If if the if the. Look, I'm not a government guy, right? I'm not a big government person. If if we didn't have to do this. To provide this utility to A, keep the incumbent in check and B, provide them a very reliable service. Um, I I wouldn't be, wouldn't have been doing this for the last five plus years. Um, as far as involving, you know, this whole high speed internet thing. This, you know, internet connectivity. Is 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 a utility as important now as water and electricity. Um, and I think you need to have more than one purveyor of it in order to keep the situation competitive. People are looking at that and and looking at having fiber internet as a requirement. When they're buying a home. And if and if it's not there, they're not going to buy it. They will pay more money for a home or they will locate in a place that has, you know. You know, gigabit internet or better. So, you know, and and what from what I see on the technological horizon, I don't see anything supplanting. Um, you know, fiber or wired. I think, you know, the wired infrastructure we have in town is. It's older. Comcast has been doing some work on that infrastructure, but they're a long way from replacing it. Um, so I I think that the best course of action for the town is for us to do it. I I'm. Confident that it can be paid for by the users of the system. But I also think from a town perspective that we need to commit. To the entire project such that it'll enable the project to have the best possible opportunity for success.
I definitely think we need a more current survey. Wides, a a pretty widespread survey, a pretty good outreach kind of thing, like if we don't get responses. Try to get them. To validate fifty percent.
Okay.
And I don't think it should be done with a marketing spin. It's got to be factual, what it means to you. It means if you still want to. Watch the Disney Channel, you're going to have to pay for a service outside of that. This is not all encompassing. Because a lot of people do not understand that. They think we're replacing Comcast bundling. And we are not.
Nope.
If there's no difference that the average user is going to see, that truth has to be said. Not assumed that people will know that.
Okay.
Well, I and I need, as you said, I mean, I I guess I'm looking for some. Disaster scenario numbers, I guess, would be what I'm looking for.
I think that's.
Well, that's, that's, we need to, we need to shore up the fifty percent assumption. If forty five percent come back, I'll say, okay, plus or minus, we'll probably get there. If thirty come back, I'm I'm. Struggling.
I'd have to agree.
Thirty percent, you know.
You know, it, again, like you said.
You want twenty million for roads on top of this.
That's the first thing people have asked was that that fifteen million dollar bond, what's it going to cost me? And that's like I said, ultimately, the 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 design, but that was also if I'm, was that the design of the sewer? You know, we're going to get.
But that's the scenario.
Yeah.
I mean, there are two separate topics. I'm just. The first thing was, the sewer analogy was, okay, we we have. We we've got fifty thousand bucks, sixty thousand bucks into this project, right? As far as the the work that's been done so far. We have the ARPA money, we have a two hundred fifty thousand dollar grant, but that does not get the project. But what happened was town meeting voted twice to form an MLP. And it was overwhelming and it was overwhelming at the special and it was overwhelming at the annual. That those two votes were taken. Um, but. I would wager that the vote to to do the design of the sewers on Powder Mill Road was probably also overwhelming. The vote to then six hundred thousand dollars. The vote then to go and construct said project. Was overwhelming the other way, which you basically got rid of that six hundred brand that you spent because it was that sunk money. But we're also in a point now, and I think this is the the historical lesson to look at from the sewers. Is we have eight hundred users on the sewer. Tomorrow, it's going to cost fifteen million dollars to come down College Highway or up College Highway to do us. A relatively significant project to connect a significant number of users. But you you're, to your point, you can divide fifteen million by anything you want. It's never going to cover its cost. Not not that it would be intended to, but it's not going to come even gut shot close. This project, on the other hand. If we, if you go for and authorize the expenditure, the of the borrowing. For the entire project and you complete the project and we bring it in within budget. The revenues will sustain the system and retire the debt. That's and that's the only goal of the project. Right? Obviously, it's provide high speed internet, yada, yada, yada. But the it will in, over the course of the time that the debt is outstanding, the revenues will be sufficient. To retire the debt. In fifteen or twenty five years, when the when the, all the debt is retired. And you look at it and go, we don't want to do this anymore. You go, okay, it's paid for, right? The the taxpayer wasn't on on the hook for a red penny. If the townspeople still want it. Great, you continue to operate, you still continue to take in revenue. Um, or in twenty five years from now, I will not be on this board. I have no idea what internet's going to look like and what that technology is going to bring it for your home. Perhaps it will be some satellite based thing or some other technology that we don't even know yet. To bring that service in and it'll look like a copper phone line and you'll be like, yeah, who needs that? But that's okay because the debt was paid for and it was retired. So the taxpayers aren't on the hook.
How many years is this supposed to be to complete?
It's probably going to take three to five years to complete and we're probably two years from starting based on. Where all the other poll stuff, poll work is right now.
So today, I'm going to ask that question as well because I know. Again, across the border, they're just finishing up some of those last sections now. And that's, they started when I lived there and that's six years ago.
Yep.
In Westfield, you mean?
And actually, they started before that.
Yep, so they didn't have the same.
That's what I'm trying to understand.
I, they didn't. I think what they did was, they. They did a pilot. I and I give West Whip City Fiber a ton of credit and the city of Westfield. Uh, you know, I'm I'm not the first, I'm not the biggest fan of Westfield, but um. In this instance, they were way out in front and they were super smart.
Well, the problem is and the reason that is is because it's they're, like you said, they're a pseudo quasi governmental entity.
They already had it.
And they know what they're doing.
To go into the business of providing internet. And considering it a utility, just like electric and gas and saying, this is what we're doing. This is the future. We're going to do it. And by the way, now they taking their act on the road and they're providing. Oh, yeah, and they're they're moving. Down the Cape now. And and but, yeah, and those revenues are helping them retire their debt. In their own system faster and they're putting, you know, a million dollars worth of turf on one of their elect, you know. Their ball fields that they're bonding for, a lot of that is revenues that are coming from these other communities and it'll be from us too, right? But I'm not going to build a, I'm not going to build a fiber network and have the town of Southwick. Operate a fiber network. We don't have the wherewithal to do it. When I don't want to get into the into that business, I don't want to be in that business. So you you subcontracted out to have them operate it, but kudos to them. But they also did not have the intestinal fortitude at when they first did it. To commit to doing the whole town. They said that would be nice, it'd be great. They still had some very dense areas that they haven't approached. And the reason is multi tenant is always a problem. I I've been involved in enough. Other things in my outside life that multi tenant is always a challenge for any utility. They're no different in the city of Westfield versus New York City. Um, but they're getting there and they're finishing up the town and they're also taking in, you know, revenue on the business side too, as they connect businesses. To this service because it's symmetrical and it and and it has some advantages to it. But.
So I've seen those three rates bounce around too, the eighty eighty seven and eighty five and eighty two.
We were playing with it and I don't think we would get a statistical number from the number of surveys we would get. You know, we, price elasticity of demand is the thing, right? If we offer this service for twenty nine dollars, I guarantee you, I'll get you a hundred percent take rate. Plus I'll lose our shirts, right? Because we're going to pay Whip City about that amount of money per user per month, right? If at at sixty nine dollars, you're going to get a high percentage at seventy nine, eighty nine, and we're around eighty something to ninety dollars a month. Right? And we, you know, the committee wrestled with that number as to where we want to be to to satisfy the debt. A lot of it's going to drop, be driven off the make ready. The make ready is going to tell you everything you need to know as to what the costs are going to be.
And when did you think that was going to happen?
We're waiting to have it come back, but we, I mean, we're we we're pretty confident after talking to Whip City that. Any other thing we need to do is site where the hut's going to be, so that will cost that out too. Um, because you need to get the generator power over to it and blah, blah, blah. Um, but the um. We think in preparation for a May timeframe for a town meeting to authorize the bonding. We would have that make ready number. And if, by the way, if it came in at six million dollars, we don't have to put a bond, you can always, you know, wipe those articles right off the. Off the warrant and not bring them to, you know, we wouldn't bring them to town meeting because the, and I'm making up the six million, it's untenable. The system can't possibly pay for itself. Because you know what? The numbers we're at right now, it's it's very, very close.
And did you, what, did you have business rates included in?
They had.
Those calculations?
They spiked in a few. I don't think it had enough, but I didn't want to, again, it's.
I I know you don't know how many exactly.
Well, businesses make up such a small percentage of our tax, tax base. You're not going to charge them twenty X the residential rate. So you can't, you know, even if you get them, it's going to be. It'll be nice incremental revenue, but it's not going to subsidize the whole service because it's just not enough.
My my thought was, how are you going to get the businesses to? Say you run a business out of your home, are you going to be called residential and pay?
I I don't think, I don't think we're going to split that here. I think you go and you, you know, you go to the ref, you know, the businesses in town. That want this service and it might be beneficial for them to have it versus what they have right now. And if they take it, that's great. If it's a business that has a law, you know, that they could then bring some stuff in house that's in the cloud now because they don't have the bandwidth to do it. On prem or this gives them a redundancy option that they don't have today that they now have. That's great and you can charge accordingly. And there's other services that you can put on top. IT services that get put on top of that. That certain businesses need that, you know, or businesses need that residential customers don't need. This is just by. This is just by sheer numbers, this is a residential service.
I don't know if you went into MDUs, like. Are they gonna have separate drops? Is it gonna be to the unit?
They have the, and, again. Density's tough.
Both separate charges make a difference.
Hundred percent, but those, right, but those. But again, it may be where you go into, let's say you pick Captain Fowler, right, you go in it, it's an option for everyone in Captain Fowler. But each one is, is a connection, right? They don't, oh, yeah, they don't, it's not one for Captain Fowler and four hundred people get on it, no, no, no. It's probably gonna be.
That's what I mean, that's gonna be important.
Two fam and all those, yeah, the, you know, all the dwelling units, even the, you know, the two fams in town count as two. Yeah.
I just was looking at, because we have it, because of, my, my wife runs hers and the, the two. Giggle thing is the hundred and twenty. So, and we're looking.
And that's new pricing, relatively new pricing, because the gigabit was a hundred and twenty dollars until recently.
Yeah.
And, you know, there's, we saw it, we saw it leading up to the town meeting, we've seen it of late as we get closer and closer to moving this along. And, and it's not, it happens in every single town where they're trying, where someone's trying to do this. The incumbent. Drops their price for the period of time in which they're trying to do it. If they're successful, the, the other option goes away and then. You see it.
Yes, we're both kinda like, we need more information.
Well, so we need the survey to, I mean, I.
And like I said.
I'm reluctant to say today. That we should put this on the town warrant. Until I.
We're, we're a long way from that. We're a long way from town meeting, right? We're, we're, here we are in October, right? And I know, but, but that's where the, where the high-speed internet subcommittee is. As far as, and I, I completely respect their thought process behind it because. I was. I was leading towards. We, we just proceed and wait till, you know, we get these numbers and then we proceed, but they brought it up as, as a discussion item and. At, at toward the end of them, you know, end of that meeting, and I'm like, it makes perfect sense, right? If. When we first started this way back in. It was before twenty twenty, before twenty twenty was. There was no real, there are two requirements were that it not be a burden on the taxpayer and B, that we cover the entire town. No one is left out of this. It may cost somebody some, a pretty penny to get their service if you're three quarters of a mile off the road. But that's, that's a different topic. But it, we are going to pass by every address. That's available in the town. So it is available to everyone, and secondly, that it not be a burden on, on the taxpayer. Okay. We've been working on that premise. So if we're gonna, and so that has a cost to it, if we just said, hey, we're just gonna go up and down College Highway, we'll pick up Fernwood, Birchwood where it's real dense. And sorry for you folks in the west, you know, you're on your own. Because we can't, you know, it's gonna be very expensive at, at, on some points to get there.
That's a good point. The survey should probably somehow be geared to those intended locations. Some, somehow keyed with a.
We did an anonymous survey and to a person, they left their phone number and email to, to let me know when I can sign up. I know it's a low number. Right? But it was crazy, the data we got back, because we didn't really, I didn't wanna have. We, we didn't want you to be necessarily anonymous, but people gave us their, because you get their IP address and everything else, but you, you know, we got. Here's my phone number, here's where I am, you know, how quickly can I get on this thing? And, you know, and I, you know, you saw the vote at town meeting, we'll go, you know. I, I think the high-speed internet subcommittee is done. Their work is complete. I think they're.
So are they just waiting to get back this?
Yeah, I mean, we're waiting on that now. I mean, there, the two, there, there's a couple of folks that have a lot more technical ability on this. And they are looking at G Pons and other initials that are new to me. As far as fiber technology and two gig and ten gig and three gig and whatever. The fiber is good for twenty years, whatever we're gonna put on the pulse, it's the end equipment, that, at the residential end and at the, at the hut. So they're, they're gonna continue to talk about that and figure it out, because there's a cost adder for certain pieces of that equipment, if you're gonna go to the. I, I forget what they call it, some other letter before G PON to get the two plus gigabit service versus one gig. There's a, there's an incremental adder to that. And they'll have to figure out if that is gonna provide the inadequate return in, in the form of the take rate to, to make this thing go around. But I think that they're, we're, we're done. I mean, as far as making a recommendation to the board and the board, their recommendation is, the math says it works. If, if the.
Take, take rate is everything.
If the make-ready comes in. At, that, and, and you're right, I, you know, the, 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 the take rate is always important, because if no one signs up for the service, it's not gonna make any money. But I, I. You know, I, was, was someone's gonna have to figure out, you know, a way to compose a survey and I, you know, I'll be glad to assist in that or, you know. If you want to recharter the HSIC to now survey the, survey the town again. Or figure out a better way from our town homepage to do it. To get people to do it, to do the survey and come back. And I don't think you, and I don't know how you go, you know.
Can, can we accumulate? Survey questions and send them to Nicole and then we can regurgitate them and say, this makes sense, this doesn't, as a starting point?
Hundred percent.
Because I would like to go out and ask some people and, and. What are the questions they have?
Could always have an informational meeting.
Or we could do that.
And we, I'd be glad to do it, I, I just.
That's, because it's funny, we can have Whip City. Came up online and the first person's name, guess whose name showed up on it? Ask Mr. Moplin. So there was about this, the high-speed internet and, because the, that comparison came up about the sewer and all, and I said, and I'm. And I'm like, I'm not answering this, and then you, your name came up, I think it would be a great idea.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I, I gladly talk about it and we'll bring the Whip City folks, we have, you know, we have an IMA with, with Whip City for this thing. So that, that part's done, like they did the heavy lifting on that, you know, we raged out to a couple other companies and I'll tell you, Di, I had a. Couple conversations during COVID with a couple CEOs of fiber companies and said, look. Here's our town, I, you know, I am but one member of a board, but I'm pretty certain that if you said you were gonna come in and. Wire up the town of Southwick, would we sign an agreement with you? I'd say, I would think so. Because then we wouldn't have to, you know, and I offered the same deal to Whip City, they could not do it. And the others would not do it.
I was gonna mention in the, in the previous survey, you had of two hundred sixty-five in one of the questions on there for reasons. Why they would switch, hundred and forty-eight responded. A hundred and fifteen of the two sixty-five said it was because of monopoly or only one option. So a lot of people just don't like that. Not the price, not the service, in fact, they said the service and, and was actually very good.
And to your point.
Service and quality were very good.
Coming out of, you know, we, we, right after this was done, we went through COVID, right? Which absolutely turned that business on its head.
Which is why we needed fresh survey, I think. People have lived with it now.
Because, you know, co, you know, and, you know, I said, you know, we, I. Comcast has taken a lot of crap from folks in town as part of this process, but I will give credit where credit is due. You know, when COVID happened and all of a sudden their bandwidth just turned on its head, where used to be. Commercial bandwidth is being used during the day, residential bandwidth is at night, and then all of a sudden residential, it just goes off the hook, right? And our service has been very reliable, it always worked, it, we, we have not had a problem with that. It's been fair, you know, fairly reliable over the years. The issue has been always the pricing of it and it continues to go up and up and up. Now, all of a sudden, but to your point of that survey was what we see, it is. All of a sudden, we're, we start talking about this and we get mailers to our house, or we get promotional pricing for two years for this. And, and so, and we check out and we, we say, okay, I guess not Comcast, you know, it really is okay in the end and we're gonna. Just not do this, and then there goes your rates again, because now they've got you back. And they have you, so there is, there is a certain aspect to that.
Life changed after that, people use it differently now, that survey could reveal. Ninety percent in favor of the thing and, and a lot more responses, so. So I guess we will.
Yeah.
Come up with some questions in a week or two, or get them to Nicole in a week or two, you can come, have somebody compile them and. We'll just form the questions.
Because there's a survey platform, and we actually did it with, like, I, we didn't use, we didn't have access to the town website at the time when we did it, so we did it with. You know, Survey Monkey or one of those things, I paid it out of pocket to do it, just to, to, so that we had a good platform to get good data. And, uh, but now we have the town platform that we can do the surveys on. And there's all kinds of things you can do with it.
Also hit the social media page.
And.
Yeah.
The public outreach or what you call, what do you call?
Information.
And certainly have a public information. Definitely.
After the survey, during the survey?
People get more information, they, and they'd be maybe less. Because I hear a lot of, especially since the sewer thing.
I know.
I hear a lot of people very tentative and.
I mean, I wanna, I want, I would hope. One of the, one of the bits of information, again, I don't wanna. Market, I don't wanna market, I wanna tell them what is being offered. And what the impact is if it fails. Should be enumerated somehow.
Hundred percent.
That risk is on their tax bill.
I, you know, and. Talk for an hour, but I think, you know, one of the things. I found peculiar when I first started going to town meeting when I moved here was like. A water issue would come up for bonding, all right, we're gonna bond six hundred thousand dollars for this, that and the other. And I'm thinking to myself, hmm, I don't care, I'm not paying it. You know what I mean, at first? And, and, and I'm, to a person in that room is thinking the same thing, this gotta be paid for by the water users from water retains earnings and they got. Well, why do we vote at a town meeting? Was because if somehow the water department spends themselves into oblivion, those, those bonds are gonna be paid by the taxpayer, right? So that's the exact same thing, you know, you know, not to mislead anyone, the goal of this is one hundred percent of the revenues. Go to, you know, servicing the debt or an accrued and or accrued retained earnings for future. Expansion enhancement of the service, and by the way, last thing is, never, ever, 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 as long as I'm. I dare I say alive, but certainly involved with this, with a town get involved in anything to do with content. If you get involved with content, so anyone who's listening or watching this, it says, oh, well, this is gonna replace contacts, so I can Comcast or whatever. So I can watch Disney Plus, absolutely not, hundred percent. This is only providing you an IP. Okay, it's almost like Eversource delivers the wire to your house. You can get someone else to bring power to your house, the, the, the supply side.
Yep.
This is exactly, exactly, exactly the same thing. If the town ever, God help you, if the town ever decides to get into content, why? Content is controlled by, A, one of the big cable companies, or B, the media companies, and let them fight it out in the street. If you get in, involved in that, you will go broke.
Yeah.
Don't do it.
Yep.
So we've always said that from the very beginning, it's said again tonight, this is not a content thing, this is just providing the connectivity to the internet. From the D mark.
And I just wanna say you guys did a fabulous job, it was a very engaged committee. Every one of them knowledgeable and.
And there were several people that had the same stance as Diane and I that were like, we need to make sure everybody knows everything and.
And, and I think you saw it, like even, you know, and everyone on that, you know, and again, I said it before, but it's worth it. You know, thank you to those folks that served on that subcommittee till, till now. Um, every one of them was brand new to serving on a border committee in the town of Southwick, which was huge even for back, you know, for back in twenty twenty or twenty nineteen. When we first started this endeavor. Um, but they put in a lot of work, we had a lot of opposing viewpoints, we had one person who's, you know, very involved with this stuff in another community. So they're, they've been a huge resource as far as advising and what works and what doesn't work. Had a contracts guy from the medical business who's, you know, almost, you know, looks at the worst angle of everything, which is exactly what you need. And then, you know, you know, another person came and says, like, this doesn't work, this math doesn't work. Okay, we'll keep looking at it, and if it doesn't work, it's not gonna work, we're not gonna put the town on the hook for something, so. No, so kudos to all of them, and I appreciate that, you know, the, the, the patience and, and leeway that this board has given that. That subcommittee to kinda do their work and come back to, to the, the full select board to, to, at this point. But I think at this point, short of we figuring out if we're going to actually, I, I would heed the recommendation of, of them. And put yourself in a position to be successful. And if you don't, just heed the warning of what we've seen with other projects that didn't, um, didn't go that way.
I mean, I think, you know, I'm not, I'm just gonna say, my opinion is the, is that eventually, regardless. Of the initial rate, I think you're gonna see a lot of conversion. Um, based on what I've seen, even when my previous residents, a lot of people were like, I'm, I'm not switching, I'm not switching. And then they find out this, the product they're getting and, and the, the value they were getting, so. Like, we just, my, my goal is just to make sure everybody knows exactly what we're doing and, and. They're well informed. And I'm not teetering on the edge scared.
So, survey, community outreach meeting, info meeting. At this point, we do not need to. Move this to the town meeting warrant article.
No, I'm, they're proposing that, we're a ways away from.
They said actually.
Opening the warrant for the annual.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright. Alright, so today was discussion.
Yes, so this was a report back from the.
Survey action.
From the high speed and this is purview of this board from here.
Okay.
Alright, so we've covered that extensively. And we're going to, yeah, well, definitely. Six minutes or six.
Six minutes.
Item six is gonna be the minutes. We need to acknowledge and approve the open session meeting minutes from October seventh, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes. From October seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Second, roll call vote, Jason Peron, aye.
Daniel, aye.
Doug Moglan, yes. We need to acknowledge and approve the executive session meeting minutes from September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. And executive session, October seventh, twenty twenty.
That was the twenty-third.
Great. Yes, now it's perfect, that's why I'm reading so much better now. Thank you. Good?
I'm just reading them carefully.
Okay.
I, I will make a motion to accept the executive session minutes from September twenty-third, twenty-four. And October seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Doug Moglan will second, roll call vote, Jason Peron, aye.
Dan, aye.
Doug Moglan, yes. We need to acknowledge payables warrant, number two, five, one, zero, B, dated ten, fifteen, twenty twenty-four. In the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred two dollars and eighty-six cents. We also need to acknowledge payroll warrant number two, five, zero, eight, dated ten, eight, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. Six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents. And before I forget, um, I'm going to, we're gonna jump back quick, but I think. Does anybody have any new, new business?
Oh.
New, new business?
New business, now.
And is there anything under old business that we didn't cover that anybody?
Yes.
Yes. Doug, you went first.
Reminder that Mr. Neil Parkin is here next week, visiting from Southwick, England. I wanna thank the Southwick Historical Society for the Walk with Spirits this past weekend. Once again, they arranged perfect weather for that event, so I don't know how they do it.
I didn't get to visit Amass this year.
Oh, wow. It was even better this, I got one thing to learn for next year too now. And also huge kudos to the Southwick Civic Fund, our police and fire departments for. Just a fantastic farm parade that was, uh, also on Saturday, with pretty full sleep in town on Saturday, it was crazy day. But, um, you know, that's such a great community event, um, benefits the animal shelter too. Um, it was so great, the, you know, to have a, the number of folks that came out for the parade itself, but then the number of folks that lined the streets through, from the. From the center down to town hall.
They went further down, of course, town hall, probably closer to the hot dogs.
Yeah, well, you know. Thanks to them for doing all that and, you know, but for the folks that came out to enjoy it, it was great and, um, you know, it really makes, you know. Makes the community when you have events like that and they come off so well and they're well organized and, you know. A lot of, a lot of planning goes into actually making them seem so smooth. So kudos to all of, everyone, you know, we, you know, that get involved in, in organizing that, and I, I don't like to thank individuals. Because I always forget someone and then I get an angry phone call later, so I'll just thank everyone now.
Many people.
Lastly, it's kinda under old business, is there was discussion at our last meeting and there was. Lastly, it's kinda under old business, is there was discussion at our last meeting and there was a public comment. Um, about the, a potential need to call a special for sometime between now and the end of January. I'm wondering if we can't have. A discussion with the landowner. To see if they would be amenable to.
Delaying that.
Delaying that, delaying, e- either amending the purchase and sale or giving an extension on the purchase and sale to avoid a special. If it's a, literally a one article special right now. I don't see us having any, I personally don't know of anything else that is of pressing need that would call the need for us to have the expense. Um, and effort in calling a special for that one, that land's been there for a long time. This, I, I'm totally supportive of the endeavor, I'm not trying to, to do anything to subvert that. Um, unless there was some other article that would be of super importance to get on a special, I think we can. We probably would be successful reaching out to the, the current owner to see if they'd be willing to wait until. After a May town meeting for a vote on that.
That would certainly be worth asking.
It, it can't, as, as they say, can't wait.
S T M was on, was on.
Cause I know there, I was gonna say, I know there was, there's a ton of things that are hanging right now that.
We could push to get done for a special.
But why pushing?
Right, my point, exactly. And then, you know, there'll be one more and one more and one more, but. You know, and I think for any other, any other items that may be coming, like, you know, even this, you know, we talked about the high speed and you know my opinions on. Anything that's subject to debate or discourse should be at the annual, you know, this would, this would not be one of them, this would be. Worth it if we already had a special coming up and we could get this done, or we had five things that would be good.
Says, oh, we, you know, I had a couple of people ask. Well, why do they want that piece? And I said, well, it used to be part of the actual farm and, but, you know, most people are, especially in Southwick, are very supportive of those types of things, so.
Yeah, I, again, I was supportive of the project, CPC is gonna vote, or already did vote on it, they've got a couple of things to tie up on it.
Trying to figure that there's some weird angles on it, and I think that was the. You know, the timing, and then there was a conservation restriction, this, that, and the other.
Just give everybody a chance to get it done.
Sort it out.
You know, and I don't know who would be responsible to, to reach out to the, the landowner and, you know, and, and also to Lee. To explain what we're thinking here. And if it's a non-starter, look, we'll call the special, but if it, if it's something that can be accommodated, we should really consider it.
No. I guess, can you draft a letter and the chair can sign? To send to the landowner?
Yeah, I mean.
They are still having a problem with the survey because they're having a problem finding the pins, et cetera. I'm in the email chain back and forth from. The land, who's responsible to the survey, the landowner or the historical society?
Actually, I'm sure it's probably that.
It's usually a combination of both if you're selling.
Usually they. So it's worth a question, so.
They'll usually do a survey out of administrative funds that CPC has, because the town is gonna own it, they're gonna want a fresh survey and a fresh print. So they know what people are.
Description, and you have to have it accurate.
So I guess we're saying Nicole can reach out to the landowner and see if that's a possibility.
We need to sign anything, just let me know.
Thank you.
Okay. Was that it?
That's it for me, thank you very much.
So, yep, STM was one of mine on that. Whether we do an STM or not, do we want to? Have. Russ Anderson complete the application to CPC for. The engineering work. For the building facade. Do we wanna have him go forward?
See, I, I'm glad you brought this up, because I know under Carl, I was under the impression that this thing was already in the works, so. Other than just, just the planning.
Again, people terminated and, and their agreements terminated, and it didn't get finished. So are we saying, yes, we want Russ to move that forward to CPC?
I would say yes, if we need any sort of.
Application.
Motion, then I'm looking for it if we do or not.
We need a motion for that.
Allow him to go forward with the CPC.
I would.
Let's do.
I'm looking for a motion to allow Mr. Anderson.
Make a motion to have Russ Anderson complete the CPC application for the. Approximately a hundred thousand dollar. Engineering study and plans for this building's facade restoration. That, that's the restoration.
Second, roll call vote, Jason Peron, aye.
Daniel, aye.
Doug Morgan, yes.
And, um, lastly, I would just wanna call out the Civic Fund for pulling together the. Trailers going to North Carolina, which makes me very emotional.
Thank you for all your work on that.
People.
I was crazy.
It still is.
I thought the amount was crazy.
It still is. That was nothing.
Well, that was just a small section, yeah.
That was nothing.
Yep. I hope they all.
I, I hope they need a second round, and I, and I just wanted to thank the town of Southwick for responding.
Yes, so. And I have nothing. Nadine?
How's that?
Nicole.
No, thank you.
And it looks like at that point, we have to go into executive session. So I'll be looking for a motion to go into executive session, to go into executive session pursuant to. I'm asked general chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, two, and three, and chapter two fourteen. Section one B, Labor Council Litigation Matters and Strategies of Collective Bargaining. With feeless union coalition player I A F F, D P W, non-union staff. And clerk union U P S E U, executive session. You're ready, master launch, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, two, and three, chapter two fourteen. Section one B and exception two, move to go into executive session to conduct collective bargaining sessions with non-union personnel and to not to reconvene in open session. Move to go into executive session, conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel and to not to reconvene in open session. Declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body and to not to reconvene in open session. Exception three, move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. And that the chair moved to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. And to not reconvene in open session, move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, and that the chair declared that an open meeting. May have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the body and to not reconvene in open session. Chapter two fourteen, section B, a person shall have a right against unreasonable, substantial, or serious interference with their privacy. Superior Court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right in connection therewith to war damages.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session as you have declared.
That was the motions, uh, aye. Roll call vote, Jason Peron, aye.
Daniel, aye.